Good morning.
Good morning. Today is December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. The time is now nine A M. I'm Kevin Day, Chair of the Custer County Board of Commissioners. I will call this special meeting of the board to order. If you do have your cell phones, if you could please silence them at this time. And then. I'll ask you if you want to do the invocation. All righty. And.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for the invocation. Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this beautiful country that we live in, this this county that we're all part of and that we're citizens of. I just ask for your blessing upon this county, upon this time. Bring us wisdom, bring us knowledge, bring us peace. And thank you for this this time together as citizens in your name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Kelly, can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Day.
Present.
Commissioner Candor.
Here.
Mr. F.
Present.
Attorney attorney Dan Slater.
Here.
And to the board, Kelly Camper, present.
And obvious introduction, we'll start right up here with you.
Stephen Wilcox.
Tony Wilcox.
John Van Noren.
Matt Erickson.
Jeff Vivens.
Jim Shapland.
Chris Eichman.
James Gilbert.
Deb Adams.
Joel Parker.
Len Arigo.
Nathan Beverson.
Okay, and online we've got Darla Stoles, we've got Debbie, John Mallett, and Caitlin Momat. So if anybody goes to speak later, if you could identify yourself for the record, I greatly appreciate it. Any amendments to the agenda?
These are mine.
Those are.
We have no unfinished business. We have two items of business on the new business. First, which is the discussion consideration of finance director job description. And thank you for going through and reworking. Anything you would like to speak to this?
So I went through the other one that we that we had approved. And toned toned down the CFO portion of it, took out a lot of things that were redundant through there, just cleaned it up. Added the benefits. To it as well, probably need to have Dan look at a little bit more, just make sure that we meet all the state requirements there.
Did you get it, Tom?
I'll send it to you here.
You had comments, though, Dane, that he incorporated, I think.
Well, I think that was a journal comment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lift ten pounds.
That's their comment.
All right, Dan, you should have it.
Okay.
So we we probably still need to put all those things. I looked at all the other ones that we had gathered up for finance director, and they all have vision, you know, just just general capabilities that we probably need to add to this, but those are easy to copy and paste into this. I spent more time on what was the meat of it instead of just the things we have to have to go on, so. But that's kind of what I did there with this, made the summary and description all into one and and just kind of fixed up as much, I hope. All the I's dotted, T's crossed punctuation, made a little larger print so I can read it.
Yeah, like the print size better.
So. Yeah, anyway. You guys have comments?
And pass that point. We have seven pages. It's big enough for me.
Yeah, I know we accept the job description so we can discuss it.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? I was wanting to go through a little bit before I.
We can discuss in detail that one.
You can wait. Oh, my second, I guess.
Okay, so I do have a second. So I have a motion on the floor to approve the job description for the Director of Finance and Accounting. So we'll move into discussion. And I'm going to do some reading before I even do any discussing here.
Is it typo under the licenses section?
Okay.
I mean, I guess the CPA, the word, the letter CPA probably need to in parentheses.
Okay.
Yeah, I compared this. They look good. I like the the criteria under the education looks fine. I mean, requires bachelor's degree, credit for your university in accounting, master's degree and credit for your college, preferred in experience, four years progressively responsible experience, counting functions, including experiences as a supervisor. Experience with C I C or equivalent government software system. Experience with outsourcing payroll, preferred with an outsourced payroll service, preferred. Not quite understand what that came from. Was that something that?
Well, if we're gonna outsource it, we need somebody that's, you know, somewhat, it'd be nice if somebody who's experienced in that type of a changeover, right? Because otherwise we are, we're doing it with blind, sort of, right?
Yeah. Would you once we hire a finance director? That would be something they would probably decide whether they want to do it or not.
Yeah, they they can bring to us the pros, cons, what's the earned value of that, or or whether it's going to cost us more. And it might be something where, because all of them operate HR support, or some of them operate HR support too, so it might be.
Meaning the benefits piece of H R.
Benefits piece and policies, procedures that they provide for H R. So might be something that the finance director and H R director get together and go, this is a program. And I've talked to paychecks more than A D P. Paychecks was very easy to get hold of. Return calls very well. I've got a meeting set up with them on Thursday, but they can ramp up and down what we need, both from a payroll standpoint and an H R standpoint as we need it or as we don't need it. As we get trained up and as we become proficient in what we have, and this is what we need, and oh, this isn't working for us, we can ramp up and ramp down that contract.
So they didn't need to be at the front of the fiscal year. I heard that as a comment last night.
I didn't ask him that. I mean, they said that was best, but that's not what had to happen, but they can pick it up in the middle. They can, so. Probably be best if we picked it up at the beginning. We'll see what happens. Keep researching.
Yeah, and it covered all the other essentials, as being government accounting standards board. Essential job function, experience, performance overseas work and compliance and generally accepted audit standards. It's good.
So I put the C P A or in there because a C P A, an account have to to get a C P A license. They have to pass four tests. And those four tests are probably important to what they would be doing here. And that was recommendation from multiple citizens that have a C P A license. And taking those four tests would would ensure that there there's some value to whether that business major they got with an emphasis in accounting was was just something they tagged on and or was something that was very important to them. So the C P A is just.
Yeah, I had that was on several other counties. Job description, so required.
Can I suggest that under education, since it's a requirement that you say that the degree be in accounting or related field?
It's accounting.
Well, okay, what if the college they went to had a major called public finance?
Is it the same? I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, it may not be the same. They may have one that's accounting. I just want there to be some flexibility. If we find a great candidate whose degree is in.
But what we can do, I think if.
And if they have a C P A license and the degree is something that is.
What do you mean if they're licensed? But that'd be something we could discuss real time if the candidate was that good, whether we want to waive that requirement or make it. Otherwise, we're gonna get. It's important to have an accounting degree.
I don't know that we're going to get a, this, I don't know that we're gonna get a ton of applications to begin with. So again, if someone's got, like I said, let's say there's a major in public finance that is in the School of Accounting or something. I mean, I don't know what hundreds, thousands of.
But that's like, Dan, I think that's like an engineering degree, you know, for equivalent experience. You've got the school of engineering, and then you've got disciplines within that school.
Okay.
So. And specifically, you know, a degree in mechanical engineering is not the same as electrical engineering. People with a degree in electrical engineering have some experience in in mechanical, but that's not the same.
So to Dan's point, in Fremont County's education and or experience bachelor's degree from an accredited four-year college or university in accounting, finance, business administration, or a related field. Master's degree.
Excuse me, there, Kevin, I have a call.
Thank you.
Anyway, I I think it's important.
Could you finish the back end of that? I couldn't hear you over the cell phone.
So Fremont County's qualifications for their finance officers, education and or experience, bachelor's degree from a from an accredited four-year college or university in accounting, finance, business administration, or a related field, master's degree preferred. Six to ten years of responsible financial or accounting experience, five years of which was in a progressively responsible management experience or any equivalent combination of training and experience.
So they had three separate degrees listed. They had finance, business, admin, and accounting, the three degrees they, yes.
With the caveat of or related field.
Or related field.
Because they have it, doesn't make it right.
Well, Commissioner, and I don't, this is the last thing I'll say on this, is if we have it on our job description that is required, there are two issues. Number one, someone who has a degree in business administration and yet has maybe been a finance director in a different county and done a great job. They're going to say, I would love to apply for this job, but it says that an accounting degree is required, so I'm not going to apply.
So it'll get related experience.
The commissioners won't, you all won't have that option of saying, let's waive this requirement, because you don't want to know that person is out there because they haven't applied. Beyond that, I think we might have a problem from another candidate who says, well, wait a second, when you advertised this job, you said a degree in accounting was required, and then you hired someone who didn't have any accounting.
Makes sense.
So it's all saying, it's all.
Okay. Any other comments?
Do you guys agree that we should add that in there or no?
Who would?
I don't, as long as we opens the door, we can talk about it with the applicants, I think it's.
Okay.
As long as it says preferred accounting. That what it's saying?
A bachelor's degree from an accredited four-year college or university in accounting, and we'll add finance and business.
But accounting preferred, I put that there.
I can do that, degrees. I can do that.
Maybe it's, yeah, but that can, and the others are all be required, everything's required, so that would be accounting required or preferred. We can, the others are. The four-year degree is what was required, correct?
So having one of those for a required field or related field, I should say, would be required, right? And so as long as you have one of those three.
You gotta have any experience.
You've got twenty years of experience coming in and you have a I don't know, political science degree. You have something in governmental management. Every governmental management degree.
Want to make sure the emphasis is still on accounting. Has to be. So however you want.
So we can, I mean, we can do that in the interviews.
As long as they know that it's preferred. We're allowing for a lot of accounting experience in the in the fields, government accounting, et cetera, et cetera, C P A license.
C P A license would.
I know.
I suppose you have an accounting degree, you got a C P A license.
That would work. That's because Fremont County had them.
And and Hinsdale does too.
Yeah, Hinsdale.
And Dolores is. Graduation from college or university with a bachelor's or associate's degree in accounting or a related field. Or three to five years of experience in accounting.
That that's a better way of saying. Because it emphasizes the accounting.
Well, I can put in all of that.
I can just put a degree in accounting or a related field.
That would also go without specifying business schools and all that. It'd be up to us to decide what fits, definitely freedom, flexibility.
Which is actually, that's actually a lucid false too than the one we just discussed. Because of the laws.
Yeah, but the laws, you, I didn't say associate, I said the way it's stated.
He read associate. So that's what you agreed to.
No, I was talking about the four-year degree, not an associate.
Let's make sure we're talking the same thing.
Yeah, it should be four-year credit.
Where he read associate with an associate degree. Am I not correct?
We don't want that in there. For the degree. Four-year degree in accounting.
Graduation from a college or university with a bachelor's or associate degree in accounting or related field.
I don't think we need the associate or associate.
Or you can bypass the degrees altogether and just have three to five years of experience in accounting to reach.
So would you prefer what we initially discussed? So would you prefer what we initially discussed?
Yeah, I like what we initially discussed, but but. All I was trying to say is it gives us the. And as long as it focuses on the accounting that preferred.
So we could list those.
So it's required that you have a degree, but we would prefer that you have an accounting degree.
Yes.
I would like it to read the way the other one reads, it says in accounting, then it goes, or you've got these other things. But that's our main requirement is a degree in accounting. That's the focus. And if a guy has experience in them, that he can come in here and say, well, the door is open with these other degrees, that's. It's fine, but he knows we're focused on accounting. Oh, and they and that that coupled with a CPA. We'll kind of lock it in where where I think they're gonna get a better, we get a good pool, but we get a lot of accounting experience, so people that are gonna be applying, I hope.
Okay, so. Bachelor's degree from an accredited four-year college or university in accounting.
Hmm.
Or. A related field, or do you want to put or finance and business administration or related field?
Yes, yeah.
I would leave those.
That's what it's like, yeah.
Alright, I can change that.
Okay.
Okay.
So C I C or equivalent government software system. Since we have C I C. Costs are the same. It implies we're 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 gonna stay with C I C and then discuss a man before.
Right, so all I have is what another county pays, right? And what another county pays for, let's say Tyler Technologies, doesn't mean that that's what we're gonna pay.
Right.
Because. It's got modules just like any other software company, right? So whether. We pick the same modules they do or not, right? That that price could go up or down.
And at the present time, we have C I C.
Right.
Yeah, if we change that software, we can change that verbiage in here to the. System we are using at the time or equivalent or other. Software systems.
It's just preferred, I mean, if you got somebody in here that knew that that that. Applied for the job that knows C I C, major plus. Because they don't have that learning curve.
Well, we want them to have experience in software, so it's not prefers, this this implies it's, if if they didn't have any experience in any government. Software system. They could apply. We want them to have experience in a government accounting system. I wouldn't put the curve there, you could put C I C preferred.
So you want that required then?
You know, and it, I mean. It'd be a heck.
You know, every, every, every time you put required, you're gonna limit.
That's right.
Right?
Well.
So then, so then you lengthen your time.
You think um. Yeah, that's a good question.
I mean, every time, every, every, every new requirement is going to.
This is the system we have, and if they're not familiar with it.
Right, but if they were familiar with another one. At at least it's something, it might not have to be C I C.
So you you're gonna say.
So I'm just saying, so if you have some experience or some experience with a government software system, that's what we prefer to have. If you don't and you know other softwares that aren't maybe governmental softwares. Uh it's still, it's still, at least you know some software.
Um but it could be. It just depends on how much, well, I don't know. I think it would, it's required, governmental software system experience would be. It's different.
So as requirements go up.
Hmm.
Length of time is gonna go.
I understand that, I'm not worried.
And price is gonna go up.
And then what, once we get them, the the problems we have with somebody doesn't understand the system, he's in charge of the department. Gonna have to come up on a learning curve there, the county's, what's better off? Are we better off waiting to get the right guy or training somebody that wasn't qualified in the first place?
And I get that point. But when we made the software conversion, we had elected officials that had to learn the new software. When we made the conversion.
So we got people here to train them.
Avenue to. To C I C, no, we we brought C I C, spent a lot of time here.
Yeah.
Making that conversion.
Don't come in and train a new director.
Sometimes that may have to be, maybe if we don't, if you don't.
I know, maybe it's not a point worth arguing.
I mean, we're not, we're not a big company where you can do a CEO turnover of two years. And you got one shadowing the other one for two years because you know, cause you got a very progressive plan of turnover. Um to hear it it's worked somewhat cold turkey.
I don't know, it would be, but like it is for now. What you have, Kevin? I'm gonna get back to the whole point, I guess, if you look at knowledge, it's given expert proficiency. That that's this pretty good section. Maintenance of accounting records in preparation of reports, knowledge of professional accounting theories, principles and practices is applied to accounting. Ability to perform duties independently without close supervision, supervision uh and professional mentorship to support staff in productive and positive manner. Ability to operate accounting system in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and practices. Well, focused on accounting.
Hmm.
But that helps bring it back. Whoever's applying, as long as this is. Focused uh in our requests and when we publish, uh put out there, yeah. The notice to hire.
Hmm.
Cause that should help narrow the window, we're not gonna get people that aren't qualified.
Well, it'll narrow the window, there's no doubt.
Right, it needs to narrow. Okay. Good day.
We got this uh front page, I guess, uh. Just one line that speaks to the audit. About halfway down, the place coordinated frame of financial audit, including year and adjusting. Gas B entries related to papers and other documents.
One more. See what.
Yeah, they haven't got all the way down through yet, when we went to the back.
Well, if they have experience in accounting, government accounting, they know they got an audit to do, this is what needs, they they should know. They better play. What's in?
But we gotta require them to be. If you care of anything and as far as grants.
Yeah, that's uh. Grant says about six bullets up to the bottom.
Monitor activities and financial compliance of local, state and federal grants received by the county. Maintain a grant database.
And financial report. Audit.
Kind of the same thing, but getting it, it's all getting it together for the audit, right? We don't necessarily conduct the audit and we don't. Same Leonardo does, right?
Yeah, it is, and you.
But they definitely know what needs to be prepared for the audit.
Compiling all that, nothing to do that.
Goodness.
Compiling all that information included in that.
Do we have?
Kind of speaks to it, but it doesn't say that they are responsible for the compilation of.
Well, I can, I can add it to the bullet point, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine, four, compiled data for periodic and special reports, prepared county financial statement summaries.
The general summary.
Add audit to that list of names.
And audits as required.
You guys are good, if you're good with that.
Yeah. May read that summary, it's a pretty good summary, it says administer and perform a variety of complex professional and technical functions necessary to maintain the financial systems and operations of the county. Manage the maintenance of Custer County accounting records in preparation of financial accounting reports and statements. Let's follow them, direct, external and internal finance, financial accounting and reporting, operations, debit financing, debt financing and monitoring sales tax collection function. Serve as a financial advisor to the Board of County Commissioners and other county department directors and officials, reports to the Board of County Commissioners, pretty good sum.
Anything else? You have Kevin concerns, questions? Thoughts?
Finish this last little section here. I like the scheduling of the regular meetings at uh departments. And then there's the other verbiage that is added, it's, you were saying. Um. The salary range and our benefits, which is. I think the benefits is something that they're adding.
Yeah.
Hmm. The other thing that will be added to this. Uh.
Well, I need to talk, I mean, Dan, do we need to put all those? And I saw, and it's only because I saw it in the other. Job descriptions from the other counties, but some of them have, you will be standing this much, you'll be sitting this much, you'll be looking at a screen this much, you'll be, are those. Well, we've we, we've had to start to do that in construction all the way through every, I mean, and it's because you have.
That construction job, you can understand, maybe this.
Yeah, but I mean, they're at, they're, those are often in office jobs now as well.
You're gonna lift so much, you're gonna.
It would be good to have those if we can come, I mean, I don't know how we come up, but there's gotta be. I'm sure that maybe even some of those that you have, Brian, you probably had.
When we have some, we put in there, I think for the VOCs, the admin, we had carried twenty-five pounds or something.
Yeah, I think we did.
Yeah, the employee must occasionally lift or move up to twenty-five pounds. Employee is required to sit for long periods of time with occasional standing or walking.
Fremont County, this percentage is those in.
Yeah.
I would just copy those from one of the other ones.
Okay. Boy, they're.
Randomly.
Yeah, we need to do any kind of special evaluation, position to do that. It's just. Free to plagiarize.
Okay.
Yeah, we picked up some pretty good ones here on the back page of theirs from Fremont. Including the. And sitting in front of the computer screen. Needing the depth perception and color vision. If they're not in. So we need to make sure the. I would ask is those additions included in the motion that we have on the floor?
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else that's in the table then?
Good job, Lucas, thanks for putting it together, glad we found all those.
Anything else that you had concerns with? You want a title? Gotta have one.
I'll send it to you, Dan, before.
Okay, yeah.
So before we put it, so and we make sure we got everything nearby state statute.
All right, nothing else from the table, I would open it up and public comment. Lynn.
Well, you guys talked about a lot. Um I'd like to offer some clarification. Uh as far as CPA goes, you're right, there are four parts. There's two sessions in in practice, which is hands-on, actually having to have the technical skills. To resolve transactions, complex transactions. There's a session in auditing. And then there's a session in theory, accounting theory, which goes to to GAAP, GASB, et cetera. And then there's a section on law. You gotta go all five parts really, cause it's it's actually two in practice, one in theory, one in law, one in auditing. The requirement to take a CPA exam is a minimum is a bachelor's degree in accounting. Okay, you can have a master's or whatever, but it's in accounting. When you go to college. An accounting degree, you start with. Two semesters of basic, two semesters of intermediate, a semester in advanced, a semester in in governmental accounting, a semester in cost accounting. Okay, I'll have a semester in corporate finance, a semester in law, okay, these are all. The core classes that you take as an accountant. If you're gonna major in finance, you still take the basic accounting, but it stops there. The real meat in accounting is intermediate. That's, that's where it separates the. You wanna say the guys that can do it versus the guys that can't. Cause that's, it's, it's, it's really the heart of accounting and it's the most difficult to pass. When you get into advanced accounting, you're talking about mergers, acquisitions, consolidations, this sort of thing. Okay, so there's a real difference between having a degree in accounting. And having a degree in business administration, business administration, you still have to take the two basic accounting classes. Okay, but that it's, it stops there. So a degree in accounting is much more detailed, much more technical, and that's real important. Okay, um. And that's something I think that you, you, you know, you're gonna really want to consider. Um. What else did I want to tell you? Um. Experience is is real important, okay? My opinion. You don't need a CPA if you got experience. In order to get a CPA, once you get. Your license. You have to get certified to your experience in public account. You have to get certified to your experience in public accounting. Public accounting is gonna focus on audits and things. You know, I've seen a lot of people, and I've got a CPA, I, I, I'm inactive, but. I was a CPA, but. The real meat for me was getting into corporate life. Okay, and you talk about the software systems. Everybody says ERP. Enterprise Resource Planning System. That's much broader than accounting system. It includes all the infrastructure to run any business. And there's many, many ERP systems. Okay, so if you're in a school district, not only do you have the accounting, you've got student assessment. All the stuff that goes along with that. The teacher's education, ongoing education, all this, it's all, it's broad and it's infrastructure. Do you need, now I think CIC is a, is, is a ERP system. But you're just using a small portion, cause you're really just using accounting. Okay, do you really need an ERP system here? Personally, I would challenge it when you say having CIC experience. Um, if you're a carpenter. You use a Makita, or you use a DeWalt, or you use whatever, you don't care. They're saws. Or they're drills, or they're whatever. That's kind of the same thing with software. All the software works as it's designed, and none of them are perfect. They all have glitches you're having to have fixed. So to have specific CIC experience. I mean, the person's gonna pick up on the software pretty quickly. You know, for, for Custer County, I mean, I could make an argument. That you could bring in QuickBooks. Compliment, compliment it with knowing Excel skills and maybe some access database skills. And you can be real cheap and you can make it work real well. Okay, it's kind of the guy that's driving the truck that makes the difference. So I, I, I just wanna offer this stuff to tell you my experience, and that's the way it works. And um, the key to somebody coming in here. Is the key to them having the knowledge to be able to handle things like uh leases. Knowing how to calculate present value, knowing how to establish an amortization schedule. For depreciation or amortization, NIP value, and all that kind of stuff, okay? You really don't need a sophisticated. ERP system to do that kind of thing. I do it all on my own myself, but uh, I, I, I just wanna help, help you with that, okay?
Lynn, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, bye.
Anyone else here?
I'm just add, just real quick, the, the state does not require an accounting degree per se. The state requires twenty one semester hours of accounting courses, and there's a list of courses as well as twenty one semester hours of. Uh, business administration courses. Um, but it does not actually label this an accounting degree per se.
Twenty one. Credit hours, twenty one credit hours of. Uh, accounting and twenty one credit hours of business with new.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, James Gilbert, um, from the discussion I heard today, I'm a little confused. I thought this was the meeting to hire, or to discuss a director of finance. Um, it sounds like you're looking for a director of accounting. Um, and actually not even a director position. Um, in my mind, the important, the most important. An important aspect of this position has to be the ability. To maintain and plan and foresee the financial health of the county. You guys need help with that. There's a lot of complexity to it. It's not simply an accounting job. That's a part of it, and that should be part of what the director brings on board. Um, otherwise. Uh, it sounds like what you really want is some kind of an accounting manager to. Um, ensure that you don't get another bad review or audit. Um, that. The results of an audit shouldn't be the sole focus of this position. It's the overall. Financial health of the county. So um, I think you've narrowed your job description way too far. And uh, focused it way too much. On the accounting aspects and lost sight of what the position is. Because you have to fill the position you have or eliminate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to read? Not seeing anything online. That brought to mind something, sir, or something that you said. One that I will throw out there and nothing. Is the ability to work well with others. Cause they will be working with uh. Multiple department heads, different people. Uh, and I know that's. A hard one to measure. But I think if we had that out there as an ability, uh.
There is something close to it.
Where's that at?
Knowledge and skills and full supervision and professional mentorship to support staff in productive and positive manner.
And under general requirements, the third bullet down, establish and maintain effective working relationships with Custer County employees. From the same or different department offices, entities, vendors, members of the community, and all customers, be a leader.
That, I think those two items will suffice. Thank you, John.
And Mr. Gilbert, thanks for your. So there, we do also have on here direct to development and administration of the county's capital improvement plan, including financial analysis and capital construction and lease purchase agreements. There probably is a heavy emphasis on the accounting part, but, but yeah, we can't forget. The other parts of, of the financial person for us as well.
Anything else, Jim?
I like, are you still wanna require the CPA? Do you wanna make that preferred? Preferred, I think when we talked about it, it's just what we said last time. Yeah, it's not what I have down. First fine. Required, it's fine, preferred. Well, I thought that's what we had.
And then I guess the, just the comment to Lynn's comment, do we wanna leave that as a CIC? You have or equivalent government software system, so that. Kind of covers that.
Yeah, I think it's pretty loose.
And, and to Lynn's point, it's preferred. If they have knowledge of it, they may go, hey, I've used this before, and this is a waste of money. So if they don't have any experience of it, they may go. They might be software hungry, like a lot of people are, and go, software, software will fix it for me. And it doesn't, so. Yeah. Trying to cover all the bases without, without narrowing us down to too far, too far, right, or too much. I'll make the changes. You guys. Are good with those? And I'll have it done by the end of the day, and I'll have it over to Dan to review.
Okay. So do you have a motion on the floor? To approve the Director of Finance and Accounting Job Descriptions as modified. Uh, here today, as well as with the additions, the required additions. Uh, per law. On that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Our next item of business would be the consideration of posting the finance director position.
I'll make the motion that we post the finance director position until filled, so unending, but not just. Locally, um. And locally. Not every newspaper cycle that goes out there, but. Unless we have to, but um, Glassdoor, Indeed, Jobs.com, what, whatever, we ship it out to. CTSI, CCI as well.
There's an accounting. Corp, oh, what is it?
LinkedIn, whatever, I don't. Whatever else.
Love, but there's a.
Throw it out there.
Maybe Lynn knows. Lynn, is there an accounting uh, school or a professional organization that would take applications? I think there is.
The uh.
I can't remember the name.
You can go Color A CPA Society.
That's what I looked.
And you can also go to the AICPA, which takes it national. But there's a whole bunch of places you can go. I know I get uh. Jobot is one, I, I, I get them every day, where they're looking for positions. Uh, in fact, I sent one out to the group last night that uh. There's an advertisement for a physician in Walsenburg, and I think they said uh, the range is a hundred and forty to two hundred thousand, including.
Walsenburg?
Yeah.
Wonder who's their sugar daddy.
Yes, well, that doesn't mean they're gonna get it.
I can't believe they haven't.
Couple of. I like the CCI, cause I know we get emails from other counties are looking for things. Uh, well, I mean, we were at CCI as well, that. Summit County, I guess, is the one, they had posted. A couple of physicians and put it out there, and there were other counties that had someone form. That fit the bill just right, so.
CTSI.
And I would agree, the newspapers, are you, what are you thinking there, like initially is a couple of weeks and then if it, uh, then. After a short time, putting it out there again until the job's filled, or what's your thought?
Well, I mean. I don't know, I guess that's a Dan question. If we have, once you post it, you have to post it until it's used up, or can you retract it from? One place.
We retract it.
And leave it in another one.
That's up to you guys.
Yeah, we can post it anytime.
As little as you want, it's not a legal requirement, but once you post it, it's gotta stay posted in the city.
And we ought to post it in several papers, not just a county paper.
Possibly, yeah, seriously.
Springs and Denver. Couple runs.
Any further discussion here on that?
I'll, I'll second that motion.
We did not have a second, okay.
I'm waiting for him to decide how we encapsulate the broadcast of the position, and so I think. We got a general sense. Newspapers in the state, several or uh, organizations, correct, until it's filled.
Anything else here?
Awesome.
Public comment. Go ahead, sir.
Jim Shaplin, I really like the idea of it being posted for that nationwide organization. Cause you'll get people out of Kansas and stuff that are very qualified, but they'll come here and work for less money to be in the mountains.
True.
Like the way you specifically put uh. Pointed to the flatlanders here.
Well, it's a fact. I had a friend that run road in British Chippin, uh, Green County for a while, and he always went to Kansas and stuff. Cause he said the people were trained and they come up here, you didn't have a whole bunch of problems, and they'd work for less money. They were happy to be there.
All right, thanks, sir.
Well, we got less money. We got that, we got, we meet back right, right now. Have we got maps? Have we got maps?
Yeah.
Anything else? Seen nothing there. Go ahead, sir.
Um, I'll make this question as a statement.
James Gilbert, by the way.
Yeah, James Gilbert. When you post these director positions, since you have existing directors in the. Organization, I assume that the parity with those positions is a consideration rather than a. Distinction between directors.
Does that mean, it mean anybody can apply to him?
No, what I mean is that when the physician comes in, you're not paying this particular person twice as much as all your other directors.
We pay what is required, necessary to have the right person there.
Does your salary range for a director position encompass what you're proposing to pay?
Yes.
Yes.
Including the directors on board.
And the directors, not every job position has the same salary range, including across the board director positions. Some will differ.
And that's in true in all counties, Jim.
So.
I do have never heard of an organization that one director has one salary. Range, one director position, not a person. Has one salary range. And then there's a different salary range for director.
Then we probably use the term director too loosely.
So it's not a department position.
Department, it's just a department head, really. We, we use director, I mean. If we wanted to make, you know. Dr. Brown, Public Health. Director, right, Finance Director, HR Director, well, do we make the director over the custodial folk a director? Know that they're still a department head, it wouldn't be considered a director, but.
The same is true for any defined position.
But I'm just telling you, I've seen it, Jim, all the government organizations in the state are different. Different levels.
GS ten is a GS ten.
And we're starting to get into a back and forth here, gentlemen.
Okay.
Thank you for that, though. Anything else? Nothing online? Uh, those in favor of posting a director of finance position and accounting position. Uh, as a adopted here today. Until filled, signified by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. Uh, any additional items of business, gentlemen?
Uh, no, sir. Oh, yes, so just to let you guys know, uh, Jennifer Cree is on board to finish up the year. Going through the Harper Grants and the LAPCF grants and filing that. Uh, filing uh, those reports, so.
Yeah.
Closing us out for twenty three.
I have a couple of quick things. It was brought to my attention, we have not went out for. Bids on the propane service for the county and where the trash service for the county as of yet. I don't think it would be. I think it would be prudent to go ahead and speak to that at this time, so we can get those out. So I wanted to bring that to our attention here today. Uh, are you gentlemen good with the. Posting that uh, advertising for those bids to come back in for the year of twenty twenty four? I believe the propane actually is on a mid-year cycle.
Because of that pre-bi.
But we don't have to do the propane at this time, uh. Just the trash service. Is there any others that we put out, advertise for bids on, just those two? I guess the only one we would need to address would be the trash.
Okay.
So.
Why?
Uh, if we can do that. And I'm gonna look over at you to see if you would be willing to do that, or do I need to look over to my left? Uh.
I know we have Kelly post them.
I can just reach out to them, yes.
Yeah, we wouldn't really have to advertise, just reach out to both companies and.
Other companies up there.
We got three now?
I think so. I only know two, but that's just.
A new one pop up.
I don't know.
If you know of one, I guess if you did let us know.
Is there just?
Oh, I know about.
Yeah. I, I mean, some people gets, I mean, I get mine out of the.
Yeah, but I know.
So I, I don't know, I don't know what.
In this big tank up on the hill, you know.
Well, that's propane. We're just on trash right now, because propane's in all.
You're right.
Oh, yeah, we're on trash.
We're on trash. Kelly and I were doing propane.
You smell rotten eggs.
Yeah, do it, do it.
Yes, I can reach out to both.
If you don't mind, I know it's not in your job description, but I'd appreciate it if you could do that right now. Thank you very much. And then I did have a gentleman reach out to me, and we don't have to address this today, but I wanna let you guys know. He actually has a lot out here in Golden Valley Estates. Actually, northeast of that, or in the northeast section of that, that is surrounded by county lots. And was reaching out to see if the county might not be interested in acquiring the lot that he has. I have the parcel number, I have not looked that up, I haven't pursued any of that, because I wanted to visit with you gentlemen beforehand. We probably would need to have that on an agenda to make that decision whether or not we wanted to pursue that or not. His interest is wanting to, if we were interested, to receive the assessed valuation of the lot.
Where are they, and this is something he wants us to buy?
He's wanting the county, wanting to know if the county would be interested in buying his lot or lots. Yeah, because we have lots on both sides of them in Golden Valley Estates.
Where is that?
Two fifty-five. The lots that are this big.
Yeah.
So it may not be anything.
More little penny lots.
May not be anything that would be beneficial at all. If that's the case, or it might be something that would tie a couple of our nonusable lots in together to make them a usable lot, so. If you gentlemen would like, I will get with JD and look the parcel number up and just see what it is, and then bring it back to you guys and see if you're interested.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
And I have a question. So you guys had me put the approval of the budget on the month end, but I understand that the budget is not ready.
That's true. We have to move that.
Or do you wanna do?
See, the budget is due the tenth or something like that.
Yes, through the tenth, yeah.
So, yeah, we need to do it.
So do we wanna have reinstated our January third meeting?
Well, we, we have to. We can't do it by the end of the month, huh? January first is not any different than the twenty-eighth, that's true. Yeah. But
So after that, the next schedule maybe is on the tenth.
So. Do we have the final budget, and we just need some to look at to approve? I know we've got a couple things out, we can still approve it on the twenty-eighth. We can serve five, no, we can. Well, he's already done that. We have to vote on. But, but we need to, we need to prove the budget first. Or do we, we have to.
Usually the middle levy's always. Same time, the budget, the middle levy's, uh, are usually at the same time.
Yeah, normally we would be doing it now. We haven't had the extension.
'Cause we gotta do the middle levy certificates by the seventeen.
And we're gonna have a middle levy meeting.
Or the tenth.
But you gotta know what your middle levy is to know what.
Well, I think you gotta do your own, the county's middle levy by the tenth, and you gotta certify all the.
We have to have our meeting. Which we were gonna do. We were doing that on the tenth. And then we can certify the budget after that, once we know what we've got.
Well, we'll know.
On the tenth. Yeah, we do it right on the tenth.
Yeah, we can do it on the tenth.
So budget and the mil, and our middle levy on the tenth.
Yeah. That'll fit, that'll fit the big schedules, now, and then we can have a town hall meeting with all the other taxing districts, and then we certify levies on the, what, seventeen, yeah.
Did you guys wanna do that on the tenth, or do we need to do it eighth or ninth?
No, we can do it on the tenth.
Oh, do you wanna workshop sometime in between then to?
No, 'cause we've had that, we, we were waiting for clarification.
At least two departments we need to talk to.
That's right.
So that would require.
It. We have, yeah, do we have? You got any data back on those two departments you were working at?
I don't, no. I don't.
So. What does the eighth look like for you guys, and could have a workshop?
Eighth is fine. Or we can do the fourth.
I can't do the fourth. That's just everybody.
I wouldn't be able to do the fourth either.
Yeah.
Well, we don't need me there for the eighth or eighth workshop.
I don't believe so. This is just. We're getting, we're getting out the, the acts.
We can do it eight, eight, eight or nine, doesn't matter.
Let's go to the eighth. And let's do that at nine o'clock.
So we need somebody putting that together. Lisa's gone on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, I'll work with Lisa until, until she's gone. I'm getting this all. You guys have time to review it before the eighth.
And the tenth will be.
And, and if, if it's ready by the twenty-eighth, we can do it on twenty, well, that might be, that might be. So we're good. Aye. Budget workshop.
Nine middle levy and budget. Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Kelly. Okay, that being the case, I will adjourn this meeting at ten oh seven AM.
You wanna have final public comment?
Oh. I rescind that.
Would you re, re, will you re-adjure?
I rescind that. Do I have any public comment? Sir?
Yes, sir. John Van Dorn, I, I just wanna say how much I appreciate the way you have listened to and incorporate public comment on the director position. I think it's a great example of county government working well. So, good job.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Anything else? Not seeing anything online. That being the case, I will now adjourn this meeting at ten oh eight AM.
Nuts, I thought we were gonna do an hour.